All right, good evening. I want to welcome everybody to the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting for February the 7th, 2022, and call the meeting to order. And we don't have anyone that has signed up for public comment this evening. And so with that, we will begin with our invocation. The senior pastor of Lower Creek Baptist Church is with us this evening, Mr. Kevin Burns. So Pastor, if you'd come to the microphone, and then we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Jeff Branch will lead us in.
Gentlemen, Father, God, I do thank you. I thank you for this day. God, for this is the day you have made, we will rejoice and be glad in it. God, I thank you that you are a God that is always in control, sovereign and supreme over all. God, where our hope does not lie in any place but you. God, I thank you for each member of the city council. God, as we're commanded to pray for those in authority, God, I pray for each one of them. God, and I pray that you just give them wisdom, discernment, insight, direction as they follow you. God, I pray that you just please just help us, all as members of the community, to be faithful, to lift them up in prayer, support them in every way. God, I thank you for always being there for us. God, your many blessings are always around us. God, I pray that with each passing day, whether sunshine or rain, whether cold or hot, God, I pray that we'd see your blessings. Ultimately, God, I pray that we would never get over the blessing of love. God, that you sent your son to die on the cross for a sinner just like me, for a sinner of all mankind. God, you paid past, present, and future sins. God, and I thank you for that. God, and I thank you because you loved us, we were called to love one another. And I pray that, Lenore, I pray for the city surrounding, God, that we would be a community of love, displaying you, sharing you in shining lights that are within us from you. God, I pray that you just bless this meeting. God, I pray that everything said and done would honor and glorify you. Again, God, I lift up every member of this board. God, I pray that you just please just bless them, bless their families, and bless the future of the city council, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Everyone face the flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Pastor. Not sure the city council need a lot of prayer for. Those county people like some too. Yes, sir. We appreciate everybody being here this evening and those that are joining us by TV. And so at this time, are there any amendments to our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add item 19, which is a budget revision for the water fund that was added at the last minute. We got, I think, actually Friday.
All right. So with the addition of item 19, do I hear a motion we adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county manager has suggested.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for a road creation, Triple F Ranch Road. So Micah Kelly is with us this evening. So you come, Micah, and tell us what we need to do.
Good evening, gentlemen. And I assume nobody has signed up to speak for or against it.
No.
So it's just basically an acceptance vote that you all agree to accept the name of Triple F Ranch Road for the four homes that will be using it off of Three Forks Lane.
All right. So with that, I'll declare the public hearing open. And again, no one has signed up to speak this evening to this matter. And so I'll close the public hearing and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in adopting this road creation name.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt this road name Triple F Ranch Road as Micah has presented it to us.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So thank you, Micah.
Thank you all very much.
Next is a progress update on code enforcement. And we have code enforcement officers here.
Okay. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me here. It's an honor to be up here and a pleasure to be able to give you an update on what we've done in the last six months or so since I started working in the Caldwell County area. I'm Kurt Willis. Currently, I do all of the Caldwell County and many of the municipalities in the county as well. So I spend a lot of time on the road. Okay, from the Cog, our vision for code enforcement is to be an assistance to the county and the municipalities. We want to provide a fair and unbiased enforcement of the ordinances and correct the violations and have the people become compliant with the county's ordinances and the municipality's ordinances as well. And that affects the quality of life and health of the residents. Okay, the council of government offers code enforcement in four areas: minimum housing standards, non-residential minimum, nuisance abatement, which would be your solid waste ordinance, and then we have the junk and nuisance vehicle abatement, which is authorized by general statutes. They're all authorized by state statutes. So currently for the county, we are solely on a complaint basis. So a complaint will come into the planning department, and then it will come to me. I will go and investigate it. And we only enforce the solid waste ordinance and the junk and nuisance motor vehicle ordinance.
Tell us a little bit about how the...
Minimum housing?
No, the junk, like of cars. How does that work? I mean, what is really...
Well, the junk part is defined fairly well by the state. The vehicle has to not have a license plate. If it has a current license plate, it does not matter what it looks like. We cannot write it up. So it's legal to be on the roads if it has a license plate, whether it looks like it should be or not. Okay, if it does not have that, and appears to have been wrecked, appears to not be able to move itself, like it's sitting on flat tires with grass up to the doors, if it's in pieces or laying around the yard, it's considered a junk vehicle. A nuisance vehicle is a little different. It is not, it doesn't matter about the plate with that. Obviously, if it still has a current plate, we can't write it up. But if it doesn't have a plate, if it's sitting out in the middle of the woods with pieces and a tree growing out of it, I have one of those near my house, then it can become a nuisance vehicle. They hold water, they hold fuel and stuff. It's a good place for a kid or somebody to get trapped in it or get cut on something. But if they're nuisance motor vehicles, which I have some photos, I'll show you what they look like, or what we have written up, then they're considered nuisance. So it's a little more what I think about the vehicle versus what the state statute spells out for you with the junk vehicles. The junk vehicles also have a thing that says if it's worth less than $500, over five years old, worth less than $500. I've never seen it written down, but I have to believe that the worth, worth less than 500 is a tax value, not the overall value, because most any old vehicle is worth $500 to scrap. So I think it's the tax value that they're looking at for that. Okay. Solid waste, we call trash, junk, and debris. We will get a complaint and go out, and we'll see something like that. Trash is the garbage, which you consider what we all know as garbage and trash that we throw away. Junk would be old appliances, old tires, any kind of steel stuff, any, the barrels, stuff like that. And then debris would be from trees that fall or construction that has fell over, construction that hasn't been worked on in quite a while, over 60 days. And then that is all covered under your solid waste. Also, vehicles are in your solid waste as well. And vehicles are defined as anything made to go down the road on its own power or down the road being pulled by something else. So trailers, RVs, boats. Okay, the car there on the left would be a nuisance motor vehicle violation. This one was fairly recent, and the property owner said that someone had just dropped that off because it was not there the last time she was there. She lives in Florida. So, and I will admit that it took me a while to find it, because you could not hardly see it from the road. It wasn't easy to see. But that would be an example of a nuisance motor vehicle. Okay, this would be trash. Now, some of these, it takes a long time to get them abated. We can go in like a bull and be very forceful, use the courts, use every means available to try to get something done. But what we try to do is try to get compliance from the property owner so they come and clean it up themselves. To me, it's a balance between private property and the best for everybody in the neighborhood. So I try to keep a balance of that. It's a balancing act. I don't want them to be, I don't want it to seem like the county's invading on their property rights and their personal rights. And again, I don't want their neighbors to have to deal with it either. So it's somewhere between being a good neighbor and having your own place. I understand it completely. Okay, this would be a junk vehicle. That was a complaint. It is actually sitting up on jacks, and of course, it has junk and stuff in the tailgate or the bed area. I like to sort of say that junk vehicles are the gateway drug to all the other junk and trash that you would get in, in the property. So it starts out with a nice old truck. They're going to work on it and get it fixed. And then it turns into something that's collecting garbage. And then eventually, it just sits there forever. So part of what I do, I feel like is the Lord's work, because somewhere there's a wife that is so glad that that truck is leaving, or there's a husband that glad that his mother-in-law's old car is finally... So it's somewhere between those two. And then you'll have someone that will fight tooth and nail to keep the vehicle no matter what. So this is another place. This is actually a beautiful place on the lake. And it has been let go terribly, and I'm having a hard time getting a hold of the owner. Sometimes it's elderly people that are in and out of care facilities, and whoever's living there is not taking care of the place.
Yeah.
So we have a hard time with that. This one may have to go to court eventually. So I've cited them for it, and I've heard no response from them. If I can get them talking and get back and forth and deal with it, then I can get it done. But if they won't talk or won't call or won't complain even, then it's hard to get anything started. So finally, you have to go to the last resort. Okay, we have quite a few large cleanups that are still in progress. Some of these take a while. This one in particular, the gentleman lived in the middle, top middle photo there in that mobile home for quite a while, and he lives in town now. And he's 80 something years old, and he does not want to get rid of his stuff. And then, of course, his helpers and caretakers don't want to get rid of his stuff either. So we're in a process of helping them get rid of the stuff. So they have carried it out and set it out next to the road where he can come by and still see it. But now we're moving on in the progress to where they're going to have to eventually haul it off. So this property actually has an old, bottom left is an old mobile home that somebody just backed in there and left, and he's keeping stuff in it. And it's sitting on the wheels wobbly and not very sturdy. So it's more of an unsafe condition now than it is anything else. So we want to get it out of there. If you don't, we're just kicking the can down the road, and eventually someone's going to have to clean it up. Here is another one that the planning department has been working on for quite a few years, I believe. And we sent a couple violations out. The property was sold, and the new owner has done a very amazing job of cleaning up. And he is mostly finished with the cleanup and working on the house now that's on the property. So we're seeing a lot of progress on that. Now, we do have some wins.
Is that where, is that where there was a farm on, on that property?
On this one?
Oh.
No, it was actually a junkyard.
Oh, okay.
And right beside of a pretty nice church there on Hickory Nut Ridge Road.
Did he have cattle and stuff on that property?
He may have. That would have been before my time.
Okay.
It is fenced in with chain link fence.
So now the property has been sold?
It has been sold.
Oh, okay. No more animals or anything on the property?
There aren't. Well, there's a couple of dogs and stray kids running around every time I go by.
Yeah, that's okay.
We're, we're very familiar with that church. Let's just say that. And most of the 200-plus congregation, they all have our numbers.
Oh, I would imagine so. They should be happy, they should be happy with the progress.
The hogs would get out, the hogs would get out and, and bite themselves over to the church.
I have, I will say this, you know, I haven't had anybody call thanking us yet. I don't know if you guys have, but anyway. No cash saving, Pete.
I would love to. And I thought Hudson was the place where all the...
I will say this, thank you for cleaning that up.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the planning, the planning department started on it, had a really good jump on it. So I just got lucky and picked it up when the new tenant took it on. So here is a junk vehicle, nuisance vehicle, and it kills me to even say that, since it's such a nice old Mustang. But you can see it was abated and moved. And then they had a Subaru also on the property that was moved as well. Sometimes it just takes the first, what we do is we go out and get the complaint, go out and investigate. If there is a violation, I send out a notice of violation, which is a warning letter. Gives them around two weeks or so, depending on the size of the cleanup. If it's a big cleanup, I go out three weeks or so, and sometimes that's not reasonable either. But it gets them calling me, and then I can go out 60 days if I can, but that's the max I can do myself. Once that happens, if they have not abated the nuisance, then we will send out an order to remove it. And that is sort of the beginning of the legal process. Once they get the order, we give them two weeks on that. And at the end of that, we can either tow the vehicles, if it's a vehicle violation, we can tow them, or we can cite them for it. If it's solid waste, we can write them citations with the county. It starts out at $250. So this one left after the initial notice of violation and a few mean emails he sent me. So I did not have to respond. He eventually just moved them himself. So everything worked out well.
Got it.
Okay, this was out on Drag Strip Road, does not have an address yet. Evidently, there's a lady that keeps four or five kennels worth of dogs up there on a big empty couple acre lot, which is not a problem according to the dog warden. They are well taken care of. They're just out there all by theirself. But there was also a lot of junk. So I went out and rode it up, and she actually moved all the dogs and cleaned up the junk. That is some more of the junk that was there.
I rode by that one. It's significantly improved over the one I was...
That's at the top of the hill on the left before you get to the old landfill.
Right beside the old graveyard there where the church was, right. I actually went over to take this photo on the right the other day, and the guy was in a truck and trailer hauling more stuff up the road. So I don't know if he's bringing it back now or not. But I think he brought the dogs back, because he said something about he couldn't stand the dogs at his house. He is having to do something with the dogs. So I think he's bringing the dogs back. So this is one I'll have to keep a perpetual eye on.
Yeah.
So, but the complaint came in from the graveyard. Obviously, people there paying their respects and pile of trash next to them. So it's one I'll have to keep an eye on. This one here worked out fairly well. The trash in the little Zuzu truck was so much to start with that I couldn't tell what kind of truck it was. And then I went back a couple weeks later, and I had a dumpster, and then a couple more weeks later, and pretty much everything was cleaned up. So a lot of this is rental property as well, and some of it is property that people have inherited, and they don't live here. They rent it out. And when they get a letter in the mail, it might be the first time they know that things aren't looking as good as they used to. As long as they keep getting paid, they don't really come and look at it. So a lot of these places, it helps to get a hold of the property owners, and they will take care of the tenants or threaten to evict them. And in some instances, they do get evicted. That is it from the nuisance.
I noticed in my book here, it talks about campers too. Can you tell us about what the audit says on campers?
I am going to turn it over to Teresa. I am the eyes for the RVs and campers. So I will get a message from her to go to a certain place and look at one and maybe take a photo for. But she will handle everything from then on. So I'll turn it over to her and let her answer anything you guys need to hear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How are you gentlemen tonight?
Wonderful.
My name is Theresa Kenny. I'm a senior planner with Western Pima Council Governments. I am also a certified zoning official in the state of North Carolina. And I have been since probably 1994. So I've been, been doing this for a while. Zoning enforcement is probably not as dramatic as, as what Kurt does, and because we deal mostly with building setbacks from property lines, buffers, from resident, between residential properties, commercial properties, building heights, density, and similar land use policies. So most of the complaints that we receive, and let's see, let's see if I can get this to move around. Most of the complaints we receive are just complaint basis. And, and so I work on basically the flood damage prevention ordinance, which is the ordinance that you're required to have in place by FEMA and the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. And that is, that helps you maintain your insurance programs. So people that do have properties that are located in the flood zone can maintain their, make, maintain their subsidized insurance through FEMA. We also do zoning enforcement. So zoning enforcement basically is what I said before, and we go on a complaint basis. So basically, I would receive a complaint, usually through email. I would investigate. I always send a courtesy notice. And because a lot of people don't, don't realize that they're probably in violation of, of the ordinances. And then if I don't get any type of communication established and start working on the process, then I send a notice to comply. And, and then I would issue a citation. And then at that time, you know, as the citation builds or is not correct, then we move forward with more forceful, direct enforcement. This is one of the properties I've been working on since probably August. And what it was, it's really important to get a building permit anytime you start any type of building. So that way, all your, all, and also get a zoning permit before you get the building permit. And that way, you're, you're given all the, all the parameters that you're, you're supposed to meet. In other words, to make sure it's in compliance with the zoning ordinance. So this is a building that was built encroaching on the neighbor's property. And, and so it's by at least, I think we're, I think we figured out through survey is at least eight feet encroaching onto the neighbor's property. And the houses are fairly close together. The property owner, I think the individual called, the neighbor called in and said, you know, hey, this guy's building them on property. And come to find out that the contractor that the individual had hired had not gotten a building permit. And so there, you have two violations going on. And, and so the property owners did discuss perhaps a land swap, but the building is so, it much encroaching upon a property line, it could potentially put the neighboring property into what we call non-conform use. So, so they're, they haven't been able to work out an agreement on a property swap. And the property owner was given a notice of violation to move it. And he's attempted to move it. He's, he's had to hire, he's had several crane operators come out to look at the property and, and hopefully be able to move the building, but no one's taken, no one's taken the job. And so the next thing that I'm going to be working with the property owner is a notice to remove. And so he's probably going to have to dismantle a brandy building. And, but that's one of the, one of the things we work on. One, the other thing we work on is we do have a lot of complaints on RV, people living in RVs and campers as, using them as a permanent residence. In the state of North Carolina, and also in the zoning ordinance, campers are not to be used as a means of permanent residence. And that seems to be something that, that we get a complaint on quite often here in the county. And you wanted to ask a question?
Yeah, I just, I don't like that idea. I just wonder if we could change ours where people can live in campers. Because I mean, I know people that sell their house and buy a $500,000 camper and live in it and travel and stuff. As long as they got, as long as they're hooked up to water and a sewer and stuff, why can't somebody live in that camper?
Mm-hmm.
That's my question. I mean, can we change ours? To me, I'd make a motion to change our ordinance to where people could live in. I know several people's living in them right now.
We do have a, what I would call a compromise, where someone is, say, building a home, and while they're building their home, they can live in the camper.
I lived in one when I was building mine.
Yeah, we do, we do allow for that. Yeah, most are an active building permit.
Somebody wants to travel and come home and stay for a couple months and then leave and go in their camper. Is that counted as a permanent residence? I mean...
Well, it's part of North Carolina building code.
If they've got a plot of land, it's got a septic tank and well and, or water or whatever.
Well, it's, it's part of North Carolina building code, that they're only to be used as temporary residents. So, so what you would have to do to change that, I'm not sure. That would be something the attorney would have to investigate or staff would have to investigate. Okay, so I'm going to go to the next page. And this is the, a number of violations I've received in the last several months. There's about 14 of them. I've received another today. Several of them are campers. And one of them is a floodplain violation and where someone constructed upon in a 100-year floodplain. And it's important that, and I contacted the property owners on a couple of occasions, and they're supposed to be working on what is called a base flood elevation certificate. And once they provide that, then we can release a floodplain permit for them, and everything should be good. It's really important that we, you enforce the floodplain, because every so many years, the state comes in and does an audit, making sure that we're in compliance with our flood damage prevention ordinance. And so that could, if, if we're not in, in, in compliance, then it could affect the flood insurance program throughout the county. But, and then other things that I've been working on basically is just some administrative stuff. So people that are doing home occupations outside of the home, in other words, they might be running auto business or auto repair business or some other type business, and investigating that. And, and then another complaint that we have is a, a house that was, it built, and it encroaches one foot into the setback requirement for, for, that's in the zoning ordinance. And so right now, the property owners are looking for, looking to do a land swap, so I'm waiting on the surveys to come back for that. And so that, that case will pretty much be closed once that's over. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. But, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Like I said, mine's not as visually dramatic as, uh, as Kurt's, but, uh, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I just want to thank the cog and, and, uh, both of you for, uh, helping Caldwell County. Uh, and, and Kurt, you, you said it well, to have a balance. You know, we want to make sure we don't infringe on property owners' rights, but then again, we want to make sure our county has kept clean and presentable for people to come and to, to live and to raise a family. So yeah, I understand that balance and I could just tell by your demeanor that that's the way you operate. And so I'm, you know, I'm thankful for that and, um, and some of those areas that you, uh, showed on the, on the screen there, yeah, we, we, we're familiar with those. And so, you know, we want those people to, to live in peace and, you know, but we just want people to clean up, you know, and, uh, you know, I know some people are pack rats and that's okay. Just keep it orderly, you know, uh, keep it nice. But thank you for, for how you handle all that and, uh, I appreciate, I appreciate that. And thank you for, you know, keeping our ordinances and our planning and, uh, together too. And I, you know, I understand, I understand the, you know, the, the camper situation and the mobile home, uh, motor home situation. But when you have a North Carolina ordinance with that, that's, but at least we do have some flexibility. I mean, I, I know some folks on the Grace Chapel Road that are building a house, but yet they've got a nice fifth wheel out there, but it's just temporary until they build, until they build. And that's, that's totally okay. Yeah. Cause we need to have some flexibility.
Yeah. And very few communities allow for that, but, uh, I think Caldwell County is one of the first ones I've worked with that does that. But, uh, as long as, uh, the property owner is moving forward with building the house and does it in a period of time that may be set by, you know, the regulations or, you know, just a verbal, you know, agreement, then yeah, they need to move forward. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Well, thank y'all very much. All right.
Thank you.
We can research it and see if there's a possibility, but if it's building code, it's probably not going to be a question.
Yeah. All right. Well, next is, uh, an update on the Nantahala and Pisgah National Forest Plan Revision. And Nicholas Larson's here.
Hey, good evening, guys.
Good evening.
Oh, man, I think I left my notes down there again.
I left them in the truck earlier. I'm here, yeah. Sorry.
I'm a morning person. I start to get a little tired towards the evening. So bear with me. Yeah. So I'm, I'm Nick Larson. I'm the district ranger here on the grandfather ranger district. The properties that I administer are, are the US Forest Service lands south of the Blue Ridge Parkway and from the Black Mountains on over here to Lenore. So we've got about two hundred thousand acres across five counties of just the grandfather ranger district. Within, uh, within Caldwell, that's, uh, that's about forty-nine thousand acres. So we administer about sixteen percent of the county. And that's, that's, uh, any, anything from the hiking trails and biking trails that you guys know, from, uh, fishing streams and hunting grounds that, that folks enjoy and, and all that kind of stuff. What I'm here mainly today about is, um, I'm really excited. The Pisgah and the Nantahala National Forest Plan has been done, has been completed. If you guys remember, this has been going on for, uh, we literally spent eight years on developing this plan, listening to, um, listening to our partners, listening to our local governments, um, oftentimes listening to our critics, um, and really trying to strike a balance and come to a good spot. So, uh, about eight years of, of listening and working with our publics. The plan is available now on, on our website. You guys have a link to it as well as a, a briefing paper for it. There's a couple of things that I want to point out. In the plan itself, you'll see four, uh, really unifying themes throughout all of it. Uh, and those four themes are connecting people to the land, sustaining healthy ecosystems, providing clean and abundant water and partnering with others. So I, I mentioned that the plan itself is available online and I'm assuming you guys have read all two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight pages. All right. You got that? So you had, you got, uh, on the website and then in your briefing package, there's a twelve-page overview that really gives you a good understanding of what's in there. Um, one of the main reasons that I'm here today is just to, to answer a little bit of questions and to, to let you know if you have any questions about what specifically in the plan. You're welcome to weed through those two thousand pages or you can call me and I can tell you where it is and we can talk about it and I can help you, help you to understand what that is. The plan itself, not unlike, um, you know, county planning and zoning, uh, breaks to, breaks the national forest up into geographic areas, trying to identify what's the unique geology, the unique cultures, the unique, um, uh, communities in those places. And then it breaks it down smaller, almost similar to zoning, um, where, where on a county level, you might have agricultural or residential. In our forest plan, we've got seventeen management areas or zones that cover things like, uh, wilderness areas, uh, wild and scenic rivers. We have a, a management area for interface where our trailheads and roads and public access is matrix where we're managing for habitat and clean water. So really a whole host of different things that we manage on the, on the federal lands. Uh, here in Caldwell, we've got, uh, portions of Harper's Creek and, and, uh, Lost Cove. We've also got the Wilson Creek Wild and Scenic River. That's, that's reflected in the plan. The other unique thing that I wanted to point out in the, in the plan itself is, um, and you'll see this in the briefing, is this concept of tier one and tier two objectives. So what, what that basically represents is those tier one objectives are what, what we believe that we can accomplish given our current allocations and resources. So that's what we think that we can get done kind of on our own. Those tier, two tier of de- tier two objectives are what we believe that we can get it, get done working with our partners. And you guys know, we work really close with emergency management. We work really close with North Carolina Forest Service, um, Wildlife Resources Commission. But we also work with, and we were close with soil and water conservation and, and, uh, USGS and all, all kinds of folks. But we also work with quite a bit of, um, NGOs. So we do a lot of work with, um, uh, actually today we're out with, uh, the nature conservancy prepping a burn here in McDowell County, um, to get ready to plant some trees. So, so that tier two objective is trying to reflect in what we believe if we're working really closely, if we're working lockstep with the state of North Carolina, what can we get? What can we get accomplished? Um, and just to throw some numbers out there, when we're talking about prescribed fire, whether that's for habitat restoration or whether that's to reduce risk to communities on our own, we think we can continue to accomplish about ten to twenty thousand acres a year. When we're working with these partners, we think that we can bump that up much more to twenty to forty-five thousand acres a year. That's a big difference in how much, um, how much more habitat improvement and how better we can protect the communities. And that, the plan reflects that for, for all of our objectives. So you've got that for road maintenance. You've got it for trails. You've got it for, um, restoration activities and everything like that. So it's a final plan. It's a final EIS. It's a draft decision. So what we're in right now is we're in a sixty-day objection period. So this is that final opportunity for members of the public or people that we've been working with to, to come back to the US Forest Service and say, Forest Service, we've been talking about this issue and you didn't quite, you didn't quite get it right in the final plan. So we want to object to this and, and try to figure out, um, try to figure out some way to, to kind of come to amends or figure out a good solution. So there's a sixty-day objective, objection period. And then after that, there's a ten-day period for, um, interested parties. And interest, interested parties would be folks that really hold something near and dear to them in that plan. If there's, um, but let's say, uh, let's say the management of, uh, uh, Wilson Creek and how it's presented in the plan is incredibly important to y'all. You might want to say that I'm an interested in party in that and want to make sure that, 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 that the plan follows through, that the Forest Service follows through with the, um, the management of Wilson Creek, the way it's described here. If all things go according to plan, we should be all set through any objections through all the process and ready to implement the plan in twenty, in the summer of twenty twenty-two. So really excited. Long time coming. Um, I don't, I don't think I mentioned this right out, but this is, this is the guiding document for the next fifteen to thirty years. So everything happening on the federal lands, um, in that time, or excuse me, on the Forest Service lands over the next fifteen to thirty years, um, is going to tear back to this plan itself.
All right. Well, uh, and I know one of the objectives was, uh, connecting people with, uh, the land, if you will. And certainly we've been in a partnership with the Wild and Scenic River there at Wilson's Creek. So, and that partnership's done a lot of good things, but we've got a long way to go too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and connecting, we connect too many people with the Wilson's Creek at one given time. So does this plan address any of that, Nick? I mean,
It, it does. It doesn't directly address, um, the whole host of issues that we have on Wilson Creek. Um, I, I will say that, um, I did hear from the Department of Transportation and they are expecting to start survey work in Wilson Creek for, for that, for the road improvements this spring. So we should start seeing some relief there and that's going to, that's going to really help us out to,
Right.
to focus traffic, to focus parking, to, to a reasonable area.
Yes, sir.
That project's scheduled to let this year. We're hoping by August is the,
By August for the,
That's tentative.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Don't, don't hold anybody to that date, but that's what I was told last week.
Yeah. Yeah. And it, and it's worth mentioning, it, it's a unique situation there because US Forest Service is administering the Wild and Scenic River and the DOT admin, it takes care of the road that's going through there and the county and the Collesville Fire Department that take care of the
Everything else.
Emergency services that's in that area. So, uh, because, uh, US has got limited resources. I, how many law enforcement officers you have right now for this whole?
Uh, I'm like, uh, this is on TV. I'm not going to say that out loud because it's not a lot.
Okay.
Not enough.
I know it's not enough.
Yeah.
Henceforth, we're paying two deputies to be up there every weekend through the summer. So, and a lot of people don't realize we don't get taxes off of that. We get what they call pilk money, which is payment in lieu of taxes. And they give us some and we try to split that money up. Of course now the schools get some and we cut timber on lands and, you know, so it is a,
So I've got some, I've got some updated statistics on that. So we, we support the county and it's not, it's not much, um, in, in all reality, the payment in lieu of taxes is not, not comparable to actually having residential areas. Um, but surprisingly, um, there's been a shift in, since like the nineteen nineties where historically and really throughout the nation, uh, timber receipts are what provided the majority of the income back to counties for, uh, road improvement and support for schools where, where there's no property taxes. But what's, what's been unique since the nineties here is it's, it's actually our recreation programs that are supporting that. And likewise, the, the deputies, the additional funding that we provide to the county for the deputies, that comes entirely from receipts that are generated from outfitter guides and recreation events. So the, the funding, the limited amount of funding that y'all do get from the US Forest Service, about two-thirds of that is coming from, outfitter and guide programs and recreation special events. And, and to tie this back to kind of Wilson Creek and what the plan kind of helps to do is it really, there's really a strong intention to work with the communities to design programs and provide access that meets y'all's need. So it's, it's important that when we're developing, when we're developing access in Wilson Creek, whatever kind of access that is, if it's going to be access to play at the river, or if it's going to be mountain biking access and outfitters and guides, that it's programs and projects that are directly supported by your commercial businesses, that these are the things that, that you and your constituents are going to take advantage of and, and see those values in.
Yes, sir. All right. Anybody else? Well, we appreciate your time. Appreciate you coming. You live probably off from here somewhere. You don't,
I just live in Marion, not too far. So.
Marion's not too far.
Well, thank you guys. I appreciate it. The, the last plug that I'll give is, is just to reiterate, if you have any questions whatsoever, um, for y'all in the, anybody that within the county that might be interested in what's in the plan, please feel free to share my contact information and I'm happy to, happy to talk with them.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you.
Next on our agenda, we've got two public hearings scheduled this evening that are economic development hearings and, uh, Ms. Deborah Murray, our director is here. So welcome, Deborah.
Thank you very much.
Talk about Project Polaroid.
Project Polaroid. Um, I'm pleased to bring you this project. Uh, we've been working with this company now for four or five months. And they are a significant employer and a significant taxpayer. And, uh, this is one of the largest projects that we have ever proposed. Uh, it will bring new investment and that new investment will come in the form of expansion of current facilities and new equipment. And, uh, obviously new jobs as well with new payroll taxes. Uh, the wages for these jobs, there will be a hundred and twenty-five new jobs that will be, uh, in all likelihood, ten percent higher than the county's average private sector wage. And, uh, will also bring a lot of jobs to the county for the, um, construction renovation that will take place there. It's likely that this will take place in less than three years. Uh, the confidentiality here for this particular project is such that, uh, we can't disclose who it is because they may also, make the choice to go to another state. They've made application to the state for, um, competitive state incentives. And, uh, if awarded those, uh, then the governor will be the one who, uh, announces the project. And so we are obliged to, uh, uh, keep their, them out of the, the news for, for a period of time. So we're asking for a, a resolution of support for their application for a building reuse grant and one NC fund grant. They have also, uh, made application for a J dig and they are making the decision as to which of those they're going to do, depending on what the state offers. Uh, they are asking for a local jobs incentive for the hundred and twenty-five new jobs and the fifty jobs that'll be retained, uh, should these stay, uh, here. The company does own the facilities in the other states where this, uh, expansion can take place. And then lastly, they're looking for a, uh, tax grant, a ten-year tax grant, uh, for the, uh, a little bit of assistance for this project.
All right. So hearing, uh, Ms. Murray's report, I will declare the public hearing open. And again, we didn't have anyone sign up who wants to speak either for or against. And so I will declare the public hearing closed and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in adopting all of these things, uh, specifically, the incentives along with, uh, a resolution to uphold in which we can, uh, sign. But basically the last paragraph now therefore be it resolved that Caldwell County Board of Commissioners agree to formally serve as applicant for the Project Polaroid Building Reuse Grant and authorize Donald Duncan, the county manager and successors so titled appropriate certifications for the local government applications related to these grants. So, uh, that's what the resolution is in a nutshell. So I will make that in the form of a motion that we adopt the resolution as well as the incentives, as well as the, uh, property tax base incentive and the two thousand dollar job incentive of a hundred and twenty-five new jobs to be created, as well as a preservation of fifty jobs. Did that cover it all?
Did a good job.
Deborah, for, for the board's information, uh, when would we expect to hear something on the state incentives officially? I know it's verbal.
I, I believe we will know something within the next thirty days or less.
All right. Any other comment or discussion on the motion? All in favor, six to five saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And so thank you, Deborah, and for all your work there. And, uh, looking forward to the continuation, uh, of this discussion and all the things and the governor coming and making an announcement.
Yes, sir.
We hope he gets here. All right. And, uh, next is a incentive for Project Harry Potter.
And, uh, this project is very exciting and maybe small, but I'm disappointed that we cannot, uh, conduct the public hearing tonight due to illness. And we'll just ask for the continuation for this one until the next meeting, please.
All right. So we will place this on our next agenda. And, uh, do we need to do anything, uh, in the way of, because it was a public hearing, just to continue that to the next meeting?
All you have to do is make a motion to continue to your next scheduled meeting.
So we will make a motion to continue to, to our next scheduled meeting, which is going to be March,
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries too. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Next we have our deputy tax administrator, Mr. Josh Engel, and he's here this evening to, uh, tell us about our tax liens on real property. And what you're wanting, let us, we're wanting to let go, I guess.
Uh, yes, sir. In accordance,
In accordance with General Statute 105, 369, I'm reporting the number of accounts and dollar amounts of unpaid taxes that are liens on real property for 2021 only. The following numbers have been revised as of today. The total number of outstanding accounts for 2021 is 5,335. The total dollar amount outstanding for these accounts is $2,508,093.21. An alphabetical listing of these accounts is available in the county tax office. I come before the board to report this information and ask for the authority to advertise the 2021 property tax liens.
All right, so hearing Josh's request this evening, what's the pleasure of the board in authorizing him to advertise these delinquencies?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we all allow him to advertise these delinquencies.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries, so thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
And that brings us to our consent agenda this evening, and I'll turn it over to our county manager, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Mr. Chairman, is there any items that you have noticed that you'd like to discuss before I go down the list? Or anything that you'd like to pull off as a separate item? Having heard that, we'll move forward. We have the minutes of the January 10th meeting. We also have a budget revision, which was a bank refund that the bank refunded us money by accident, and they caught their accounting error, and now we have to refund it back, amount of $25,000, so we don't want to upset our banker. The, also, you have the findings of fact for the special use permit that need to be added to the record for the Verizon Wilderness Tower at Union Baptist Road. And then there's a request to reappoint Vice Chairman Mike LaBros and Commissioner Jeff Branch to the Railroad Commission. Appoint the county clerk, who is so more than well qualified to the North Carolina Pre-K Committee. And then we have a budget revision for the armored vehicle for sheriff's office. Now, normally, we would wait until we have the funding from the state in hand, but we've already had a nine, almost $10,000 increase once and a two-month delay on resaving that vehicle. And as you know, we have had some officer-involved shootings and some pretty terrible domestic situations where we could have used that vehicle. So sheriff's officers come to me and ask, can we go ahead and process that? Which means what we're doing is authorizing a capital project, so we can go ahead and get the vehicle ordered, and then we'll reimburse ourselves with the funds so we don't get another price increase and another delay. App deployment of the 2022 Equalization and Review Board, there's a memo in your packet of all the members there. If there's any questions, please let Josh or I know. Budget revision to the Finance Department guess, or debt book, this is Gadsby 87 requirement. And essentially, in a nutshell, it says that we have to list all of our leased assets, whether they're copiers, a vehicle, a piece of property, whatever it is, and then there is a value to that, and it is considered a liability on our books rather than an asset. And so they're changing the way we do our accounting. Mr. Hilton has suggested because the county's assets are so large that we go ahead and have a contract firm do that and keep track of it for us. And it's a nominal fee. It's a wise idea. It would save us a tremendous amount of staff time. All we got to do is send them the contracts, they take care of the rest. And make sure we have compliance, and that compliance letter goes to our order and to the state of North Carolina and to Gadsby. We also caught the Western Puma Council of Governors informed us that the county received an additional $38,572 in funds for the council on aging. And there's a local match of that for $3,800, and that local match is covered by Adult Life Program, Liberation Community Action, Caldwell Senior Center, the Foothill Service Project, Freeway Transit, Harmony Home Care, and Always Carrying Home Care. That washes through our budget, so you'll have to make that budget amendment. And then there's a budget revision of ARPA funds to use to purchase our first year subscription of Microsoft Office 365. Now, I will tell you, this is a big project and will be quite important for the county, make us significantly more efficient through technology. We currently maintain servers and buy licensing for software. What this does allows us to move that software to the cloud. It creates a higher level of security and also allows all of our devices to synchronize. So our calendars on our phones can synchronize with our laptops and with our desktops, and we can see what staff is doing. So if I need to schedule a meeting or they need to find me, they know exactly where I'm at. And so, okay, the manager's out in the office right now, but he'll be back at this time. It's something we should have been doing for many years. But most importantly, and I think critically, is that you have personal and confidential information standards that we have to maintain. And what this does is allow us a higher level of security for our, our computer system here at the county. And it keeps us from having to buy servers every few years and upgrading them and storing that data here locally. It's, it's a significantly higher level protection through the cloud, and you're required to do it anyway next year. So now we can use these ARPA funds to help pay for that for the first year, and that will ease our transition over. I will say this is that that was one of the things that I was most shocked at that we didn't already have for the county. So it will help us create a significant amount of efficiency. Chris can answer on the rollout, but I think it's going to be about three months to roll out, correct? So hopefully by the spring, we'll get to see the benefits of that. Budget revision to purchase three vehicles, one for animal care enforcement, two for environmental health. Richard Gillan, our new animal care enforcement director, was researching to find a vehicle. We needed to replace one. It failed, and then we found out that in our environmental health department, we have two trucks, the youngest of which is 19 years old. So we went to the private sector and using our fleet purchase, we looked at three different companies or three different providers, Randy Marion, Friendship Ford and Ken Wilson, and Randy Marion was able to produce the best price for us to replace those vehicles. So you'll be approving a budget amendment for that. And the budget revision to use ARPA funds to purchase a new server for the health department. And I have no idea what this server is, so maybe.
Machines. That will require a little more money upfront. This will just get us by for the next couple of years.
And then we have a budget revision in the water fund where we also bill sewer reimbursement for Gamble. And luckily, they're selling more water and sewer this year, so this is a wash, no pun intended, of funds through our budget for roughly $11,000 to the town of Gamble for their sewer services. And that's all I have on the consent agenda.
All right, so hearing the consent agenda, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda items as the county manager has presented this evening.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So at this time, we're going to enter into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a3 to consult with an attorney employed and/or retained by this public body in order to preserve that attorney-client privilege between the attorney and this public bodies. And so we don't expect any decisions coming out of that meeting for our press who are here. And by the way, welcome this evening. I know one of them's hid by a sign from me, but often we've been looking over there and see no one. So we're, we're thankful y'all are here this evening and appreciate you being in attendance. And with that, do I hear, I've made the motion, all in favor of going into the closed session, six to five saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that carries, and we want to thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for viewing our meeting and hope that you have a good evening.